Okay, so we're ready to start today's work session for August twenty-third. If you could stand for the pledge. Yes, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the flag.
All right, we're going to start today's work session with site plan review for Michelangelo's Pizzeria. And if we could have Greg come up.
Come up.
Brad, are you coming up also? No, okay. Come on.
Okay, well, I'm sure we'll be calling on you anyway, just because you're here.
Dean, I'm just gonna have you introduce yourself.
I just read this.
There was just one little addition that I made.
Um, you can just say, you can sit down and say your name is fine, we have microphones here.
All right, my name is Dean Spitalary. How you guys doing?
Welcome. So you're the, you're the owner for Michelangelo's?
Can't wait, can't wait.
So, good morning supervisor, town board members. What we've got here is a site plan application proposing to renovate the facade of an existing restaurant and do some site work, including landscaping, lighting, and signage improvements. It's a roughly one acre parcel located on the northeast corner of the intersection of East Main Street and Maple Avenue. The parking lot behind it has frontage and access from both Maple Avenue and continues right through to Union Avenue. It's located in downtown Center One zoning district, which is located within the East Main Street Urban Renewal District pursuant to town code, displaces the review of site plan under the town board. Planning staff has reviewed the application, it's considered an unlisted action pursuant to SECRA. Staff recommends that the improvements proposed will not have a significant impact on the character or safety of surrounding area. Staff recommends the town board.
Well, we hope it has an impact and brings in more visits.
Yeah, well, it won't have a negative impact. But yeah, staff recommends that the town board assume lead agency without the need for coordinated review and further recommends that the town board issue a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA. Being that the site is in the historic district in downtown, the site plan was referred to the Landmarks Preservation Commission. There was some back and forth with the applicant and the Landmarks Preservation Commission. In the end, the LPC recommended renovation and refurbishment of the marble facade, the archway at the front of the building. As I understand, the applicant had a couple of.
Nice piece.
Yeah, as I understand, the applicant had some contractors come out who refused to work on the marble in its current state. I guess it was just unsafe, they didn't want to assume the liability. There was some back and forth and they did come to an agreement that it's gonna be resurfaced with, I believe, twelve by twenty-four Carrera marble. Landmarks Preservation basically considered it an in-kind renovation, they recommended approval of that.
So the, because I was at the Landmarks Preservation Commission meeting, so you came back to Landmarks and said you're gonna replace the marble that's there?
Correct, well, I've been going back and forth.
You emailed back and forth with Richard?
Yes, and Richard actually.
From Richard's email, he was, he was sent.
Richard actually came out to the site and looked at it with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yep, so I did, they were, they touched base with it. The Architectural Review Board actually reviewed the project at last night's meeting and in, which is kind of vibes with the Landmarks Preservation Recommendation that they could hang a neon sign within the archway. The Architectural Review Board did approve.
Do we have neon signs that they were in our code?
No, that's why.
Well, so I, I did look at the town code, pursuant to town code, the. Here, I have an exception that I can quote.
Did we make an exception for?
Yes, we did.
Well, pursuant to three oh one two fifty-four I of the town code, all sign types are permitted in DC one with the exception of internally illuminated box signs.
Oh, good.
So, you know, no, no variances required for that.
Perfect.
One of the larger issues that I discovered while reviewing the site plan is that at all the entrances through the parking lot and also peppered along Main Street, there are signs which advertise this parking lot as Maple Avenue Municipal Parking Lot. There was a previous lease agreement between the town and the owner, effect, in effect, from July two thousand eleven through December twenty fifteen. That lease agreement has now expired. So being that the parking lot is in single and separate ownership, now, it does not appear that the owner is under any legal obligation to continue to be used as municipal parking.
Did you look at that lease, that lease agreement and extensions for the lease agreement?
I did, I don't believe there was.
Yeah, we actually used to, we actually paid the owner for the use of that. I'm aware, yeah, that a lot of money was spent in that parking lot back in the day refurbishing it by the town.
But I don't think it was spent with the owner, it was spent with the person who was leasing the property.
Well, right.
The agreement was with the leaseholder of the property, not the owner.
No, I think the owner decided also.
It was leased from the, it was leased from the.
Riverhead Project.
Who did not own the building.
Understood, but I think that we had a agreement with.
Not with the owner of the property.
Richman, who owns the property?
And when, when the work was conducted.
Chris Pea.
Well, I think when we entered into that lease agreement to use that municipal parking, he said, all right, you wanna, you better fix it first, and that's what happened.
So, I mean, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily a reason to hold up the site plan, but being that it's advertised to me as parking, I mean, I can.
Needs to be removed.
I can say when I did a site visit, I saw three people, you know, parked their car there, take their strollers out to Main Street, so.
I didn't realize that there's little annex to the, to the east, that was like behind the, the Dalley.
The Dalley and everything.
I didn't realize that was part of this property.
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Yeah.
That gets a lot of use.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it's utilized as town parking, so.
How much parking does, does the restaurant require?
Uh, well, that was one thing, the site plan doesn't indicate the number of seats that are proposed, that will generally dictate what the seating required. The site plan does show forty-three spaces on the lot.
And so how many seats would be for forty-three spaces, what is three to one?
Uh, the, yeah, it's three to one, so I believe it was a hundred and twenty-nine was basically the cap. Um, I don't know if that's gonna be, you know, if it's gonna be dictated by fire occupancy or something like that, but a hundred and twenty-nine would be the cap without going for any variances from the zoning board appeals.
Um, do you, do you have any idea for how much seating is gonna have?
I thought it was right around that.
Okay.
I thought it might have been a little bit more, but.
Okay.
Give it a taste, double.
Okay.
So, yeah, one of the things is that the site plan just needs to, you know, solidify how much seating he's gonna have. Needs to indicate if there's gonna be any outdoor seating, that's gonna be something that's gonna be required when he goes to the health department. And I believe the town board would like to know if there's gonna be outdoor seating. There is a patio in the front of the building on the southern elevation, and there also is a, a small patio area on the western side with frontage on Maple Avenue.
I would assume if he ran into a need for more parking, that the drive up the ATM, uh, drive up spot back there, if that was removed, more parking certainly could be incorporated into that area.
Yeah, I mean, it did, that, that space there, I kind of calculated, it's roughly fifty-four hundred square feet, so, yeah, he could definitely fit some additional parking in there if the need arose.
Right.
Uh, there is some non-compliant building mounted lighting, which the site plan is proposing to remove. There are four wall packs mounted on the main restaurant, and there's also one non-compliant floodlight fixture on the roof. One of the things, the site plan just needs to be updated to show the details, the model number of the, of the proposed lighting. It's gotta comply with the sixteen foot height, which won't be an issue, and it needs to be three thousand degree Kelvin color temperature or less. I did also note that there was one wall pack on this drive-through building. That just needs to be removed, being that the building's not utilized, I don't see the need for it to be replaced.
I wonder if there's a reason why that building is still there.
Which building?
The ATM.
The old, the old drive-through building, yeah. That goes way back to Chemical Bank.
Yeah, I mean, there could, there could be a cost, cost associated, if there's any sort of asbestos abating requirement. I don't, I don't know what the, you know, why it's still there, but.
It looks like storage, that's all it's in there.
Yeah, it used to be just a little drive-through.
Oh, yeah.
We would use it as storage, but we would just, you know.
Eventually, maybe. Are you, are you buying the property, or are you?
No, no.
The site will continue to utilize the existing Main Street curb cut. The site plan is proposing one-way signage indicating that it'll be one-way in, and there's also do not enter signage within the site to prevent people from coming out. Being added is on State Route twenty-five, this was referred to the New York State DOT. Staff recommends that prior to the issuance of the C of O, we get comments just to ensure that the DOT accepts, you know, how they're gonna be utilizing it.
Can, can we do a right-only out of here? Or coming out of the driveway here, right turn only? Because if you're gonna come out and make a left, come down here and make a left out of there.
What do you mean?
They could get out on Main Street.
It is dangerous to make a left.
What?
It is dangerous.
Yeah, because if you have cars parking over here, you can't see the cars coming.
Left out of way.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I thought you were looking out on the way.
Right, right only out of here.
It is one-way.
Oh, yeah.
On Main Street.
It's one-way.
Oh, you can't come out there, okay, only in, okay, okay.
So, there is no right. You can't make a left or a right, because it's only one-way.
It's only gonna be.
It's only in.
Gotcha.
Now, right now, it's only not going out, though, right?
But you can't go out that way.
It's only, it's only gonna be utilized as, you know, one-way.
Oh, I thought it was only to go out.
No, no, only, only to go in.
And again, that's something that DOT really needs to comment on.
Okay.
Now, this particular picture, I realize it's, it's kinda old, but, um, there was an overhang now on the east side of the. Is that here? Because that's, that's not even shown on this picture.
Uh, it may have been added, whether it was Sedoma.
Yeah.
If you guys want that down, I'll take it down, but they supposedly, uh, the Historic Society does not want that down.
No.
But if you guys want it down, I'll rip it down.
And it's a nice drop-off location for people to be sheltered while they're waiting for someone else to park the car, where they can, if it's raining, they can.
Well, we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna cover that, I don't think we're, you're just gonna decorate it nicely, we're gonna marble that, uh, that fixture.
Are you talking about in the front or the side?
Side.
On the side, on the east side.
So, but there's, but there's no, there's, when was that placed on there, do we know?
Uh, I don't know, I can find that.
Wasn't that long ago, I don't believe.
Right, because you're saying it's not even in the.
Yeah, I mean, this aerial, I believe, was from Town GIS, which was taken, I think, twenty thirteen, so.
So, if you want it removed, I would go back to just ask them again if you can, if you can take that down.
He said he doesn't.
Nice warning, nice warning.
He said he doesn't want to take it down, he said.
No, I said if you guys want it down, I'll take it down, but if you, I don't want it.
Six of one half, it doesn't, it does not, yeah.
Landmarks doesn't want it down, so.
Exactly, I don't wanna.
I feel pretty expensive, don't have to. Ugly.
Uh, the site plan does propose some additional landscaping along the Maple Avenue fronted, along the Main Street fronted, which consists of nineteen pyramidal arborvitae, twenty-three rhingold arborvitae, and twenty-four house midget arborvitae as well as annuals or perennials planted around the monument sign. Staff is also gonna recommend that some additional plantings be proposed along the eastern side of that driveway.
Where did the property line end up here? It's smack against the birthday?
This is the property line right here, so there is a couple of feet here, you know, basically, all the, all that landscaping, if you're coming in from Main Street on the eastern side of that driveway, that is on property.
So what, what will be put, that'll be the short little ones?
I, I mean, whatever the applicant wants to propose, if they want to propose some arborvitae and low shrubs.
Okay.
You know, just to kind of clear out what's there.
Yeah.
Anything but rebar.
Pretty messy there.
And we have a dumpster area allocated.
Well, yeah, that's one, that, the site plan doesn't indicate it, but, you know, the most logical location would be towards the back in the vicinity of the drive-through, so the site plan just needs to propose that, it needs to be screened pursuant to the town code.
And what's it gonna be screened with? What, what do we have in the town code for screening?
Um, six-foot fencing, I mean, it could be stockade, it could be chain link with privacy slats.
Can we go with the stockade? For the, for the dumpster, instead of that green stuff?
It's cheaper.
It just, it just hi, it just hides it a little bit better than that.
Well, it's also more in performance, because you have this stockade fence that's there also.
Okay. Um, and finally, the site plan does propose to remove a portion of the concrete knee wall on the front of the building along Main Street. They're proposing a concrete walkway up to, now, will this be the main entrance, that'll be the main entrance to the building now? All right, so it'll be a concrete walkway, they're gonna remove that, they're gonna remove the rebar that's sticking out of the knee wall, cap it off with a blue stone.
Can I, can I, Greg, we wanna do, uh, do a brick walkway on the side too. So when people are walking on the side of the building, just a little four-foot open and coming in, because we're obviously taking all the, uh, the trees out on the, what is it, the east side of the building.
West side.
West side.
Well, you wanna be inviting, to make people know that that's the way.
And we're gonna put a beautiful, like, fence there, so people, when they sit on the outside, you know, and then trees, some nice, low on trees.
Yeah, you were, you were proposing a, a Masonry knee wall along this.
I'm not gonna do the Masonry.
No?
It's gonna look too, like, Trumpish.
All right, all right, yes, I mean, the, the site plan will need to be revised, you know, show us what you're gonna be proposing, we'll take it back to the town board.
So the, so the walkway is gonna go where now?
The walkway that they're proposing right now is gonna come from East Main Street, and it's gonna be right here.
But you were gonna put an additional walkway?
On the side, over here.
Right now, it's just concrete, that's where the tables were for Riverhead Project.
So this is, this is the seating area here, correct, or this is?
Correct.
So, and then, and then from here to the curb, is that what we're talking about?
It's gonna be like the corner over here, the corner.
Oh, okay, just a small little walkway into the seating area, I gotcha, I don't, I mean, the whole thing, okay.
So you're gonna landscape that, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so just, just update the plans, show what you're proposing, you know, include the dumpster, include notes about the lighting, you know, all the stuff that I detailed in the report.
Will we open it?
You guys can be okay to start now?
And then my one other, just the one other, um, issue, because people have been parking here a lot, are you gonna put up, uh, private, private parking signs, or?
Yeah, how you gonna enforce that?
I don't know.
I mean, this, a lot of houses that are on Union Avenue, like, all these houses on Union, they're all parking here, as you can see. There's all these houses along here are all parking here, so.
What do you guys recommend for me to say or do?
If I were you, I would say private parking, and I would say, you know, towing vehicles will be towed.
Is it under new management, uh, parking for restaurant only, that's what?
Yeah, I should have been right about this.
The stores.
It's filmed, so you can watch it down on Channel twenty-two.
And it's gonna be a bigger issue once the apartments come to fruition across the street.
You writing it all down?
Yeah, I've got notes. And there is also, throughout the parking lot, there is non-compliant site lighting. I'm not sure of the height of the fixtures, but I know they're not dark sky compliant, so those light fixtures need to be, you know, replaced. I'm not sure if the poles can be, you know, outfitted for, yeah, retrofitted with a, a new fixture, but that's something that needs to be addressed through the site plan. And again, they would need to be maximum of sixteen feet high, less than three thousand degree Kelvin.
That's the one that I'm not responsible for, correct?
The owner is, you're gonna have to talk to the owner of the, the property about that.
Yeah, because when I looked at the, during the lease agreement, I spoke with the town attorney, the lighting didn't seem as though it was in the scope of work when the town fixed up the parking lot, but it seems as though it's something the owner's responsibility. There was an amortization period where all non-compliant exterior commercial lighting was supposed to be updated and to be compliant with the town code by the end of last year. But as sites come in, you know, we're addressing it as they come in from site plan.
So, let me just ask you guys, if this is turning into a private parking area for Michelangelo's, then, then I would be responsible for changing the lights, correct? But if it's not, then I wouldn't be responsible, correct?
That's a gray area, we have to research.
Yeah, that's, that's something that the town.
If you kept it as municipal, we would lease it, but the upkeep is still the onus, on the, the onus is on the owner of the property. Even if we leased that as municipal parking, the onus is still on the owner to up, upkeep it.
Right, so, I mean, code enforcement should really be, when they did the sweep of downtown, they should be paying attention to private lots where there are light posts that don't meet the compliance as of December of twenty seventeen, and putting violation notices to the property owners. So, that's what should have happened.
Well, we can't look at what should or shouldn't.
Well, it can still happen today.
Going forward, I think, who is it, uh, Israel, who is it, no?
No, Chris Pea.
Yeah, well, he's got, you know, I'm sure that could be retrofitted, I mean, that's, I mean, that'd be, so, he's got.
That's, it's the owner of the property's responsibility.
You can just, you can just, just have, 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 well, he's, he's the one that will get fined on it. So he's the one who needs to, to address it, so he can, um, just have him call down to, uh, somebody from the, the building department can let him know what needs to, he needs to do to come into compliance over there.
Okay.
It was, it was.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave that.
The code has been in place for, for quite a number of years, but it, it, uh, the final date to come in compliance was December thirty-first, August of, uh, seventeen, so.
Yeah, it might be a little more than, than, only, not, not for you, but then, only because, you know, you started on dark skies compliant, because when there's darkness lights, they need more lighting that you use to have, so. It's probably a lot more than you have to deal with.
So, it is going to be a condition of site plan approval, from what I'm hearing from Greg, so you, that would have to be corrected prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or a final planning inspection before you open, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can have him contact me, just, you know, I, I can give him the details of what needs to happen, you know, the type of height, color, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Now, being that this is a, you know, minimal level of site work going on for an existing restaurant, would the town board be willing to handle this administratively or would they like to have a public hearing on it?
I'd say administratively.
I agree.
Yeah.
I don't think you have to go to public hearing for this. I just, I want some, I want some cannelloni, I mean, I can't, I can't wait, this is crazy, it's gonna be Christmas.
Free, free pizza.
All right, so I'll have, uh, we'll have.
Seven fishes.
There's a lot of lighting on here, are all the lights needed? The amount of lights here, can they, can they just fit a cup, I mean, because there's a lot of lights on this parking lot, are all of them necessary?
Without seeing photo metrics and seeing what the actual lighting layout is, it's difficult for me to say.
The, the previous, um, tenant wanted the lighting fixtures because it's a, it's a big cross-through for people that are walking downtown from East Avenue, Union Avenue, Maple Avenue, so that's why he wanted a lot of lighting for the safety of the customers.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely agree with that, I mean, you know, you wanna make sure it's adequately lit, I mean, what I would say, like, you know, this light fixture back here, being that, that could probably just be capped off and eliminated, you know, I don't think.
That's what I'm saying, there's a cou, there's a couple in there that could.
But in terms of, you know, in terms of.
Yeah, so the, it's over here, you have to.
You know, seeing when the photo metrics lay out, you know, I, I don't know if we're asking him to add new lighting, rip it up, you know, like, run new electrical lines, I, I think that's a lot, so, I mean, if he just retrofitted the existing fixtures.
Is it all out, the, the lights?
What it is, is the lights, the lights go this way, right, and with dark skies, they have to illuminate down, so that's the problem, they're, they're illuminating out and not down in the dark skies, they have to go down.
And the actual light itself, so if this is the fixture, the light can't protrude below the fixture, it has to be set inside of the fixture.
No apply.
Is that new code?
It's, it's been in place since two thousand five, but the sunset date to get it plain, changed, was December of twenty seventeen. So they had until, from two thousand five to December of twenty seventeen.
It was all new, it was all new applications, uh, prior existing ones had to come into compliance, we gave like ten years to do that, so.
None of that.
Lucky you.
All right, so we can have, uh, Mr. Spitalary can update the plans, detail, you know, recommendations from staff, additional walkways that he's proposing, give me some details on the lights, I will review it when he submits it, we'll get a small report back if there's anything outstanding, and then, you know, if the board wishes, I can write up approval resolution.
Okay.
So, anything, anything we do that, every, as long as every time, I, it's just a beautiful location and nice restaurant, nice place to have a restaurant. I just wish you'd give her that stupid overhang on the east side, but that's just me.
Is there anything prohibiting you right now from doing any of the exterior work? Do you need site plan approval to do any of the exterior work? Are you ready to do the exterior work?
I could start probably next week.
Where are you on the interior?
Uh, halfway through.
So, because our next town board meeting isn't from, until two weeks from this past Tuesday, so I don't know how the board feels about.
It's a Wednesday meeting, isn't it? It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. So, September fifth would be the next town board meeting when we would approve a resolution, unless you wanted to get signatures for the resolution to issue the site plan approval, and then you could get started right away.
Well, we still need to do about the lights, right?
Yeah, he, he needs, he needs to.
There's a few other things.
The site plan does need to be updated, I mean, right now, we're not ready for an approval, he does need to show the changes, show the dumpster, the lighting, the additional landscaping.
We'll be right in your hands.
Yeah, once, once that comes in, I'll review it.
You tell us when we're ready.
So it's up, it's, you know, it's, it's up to you to get all the information in once, once you get the comments back.
Basically, the guy who's doing the marble that we talked about, he's gonna resurface it, but, uh, I would have to get approval for you guys to give me the approval to do the walkway here, because he's doing that too, I'm breaking out everything.
The walkway's on your property, isn't it?
Yes. But.
You still need approval.
Yeah, any, any of the exterior work, you know, the patio, knocking all this stuff out, the landscaping, that does require site plan approval. So once he gets, you know, revised the plans, if you have any questions, I'll give you, you know, specific details of what we need, submit the revised plans, and we can move it along, and if, you know.
If it ends up before the two weeks, we can address it then.
Yeah.
Good.
Good, all right, absolutely, so exciting. You have to sell a lot of pasta to make up for this, bro.
Oh, yeah.
You will, it's a lot of spaghetti. You will.
I think it'll be okay though.
Yeah.
So what's the next of my way for you to commandly everything?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, I'll give you details of what the plan needs to be revised to show, and then, I'll, you know, get them in and I'll review them.
All right.
All right, thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg. Good luck, Dean.
Brand-new white shirt.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next, we moved on, on to chapter two fifty-five, uh, with Laura and the chief.
Good morning. I put those money, so then you would have put it in your pocket.
You know that.
That's why we're down here, a nice morning with, with lighting.
No, it's worse than what it looks like, and I know you guys have tons of paper, you may not want this, what I did was, all of the chapter two fifty-five events I put on a Google map that I sent to John, that anybody, I set up for the town, so anybody can, you know, look at it. I printed out from January.
Depending if you're a computer literate.
I have here five years, I have January through December of two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. How they are there each year, and they, you know, they go January, whatever, so if you wanna, for instance, in two thousand fourteen, if I open up and I see July, you can see there's one, two, three, four, five, six, so that's kind of like, just to show you what we've been doing for the last five years, every month, month by month. I know there was concern about the, um, full harvest time down on Sound Avenue, that, you know, there's a lot of activity. The busiest months are really, um, I'm gonna say, May through September, those are the busiest, if you, and again, so I'm gonna give you everybody one here, sorry.
That's okay.
Drop the paperclip and I'll be showing you.
So exciting.
When I was printing this, I'm like, you guys don't want this, I can give you another one, Dave. And I started to, like, do little tabbies, but I ran out of time, I apologize, for the different years. So it, it's just to give you an idea, what I also did is I went into my computer spreadsheet, I mean, into my computer directories, excuse me, and I went through, like, um, Costco has a directory with all of everything I've done, ever done for Costco, Duck Pond Day has for them, Garden of Eve, you know, so each one has, so if I pull up that event, I can see all the years that I did it, so I'm gonna pull a few out, Duck Pond Day has been doing this from two thousand nine to currently, that's ten years, because we were talking about the application fees at our last meeting on the ninth.
Yep.
Maybe we should get some, some lists together to kind of see what is grandfathered or what isn't grandfathered as far as.
Yes.
Imposing application or new application.
Longer than that, right, Laura?
Yes.
Laura, not to interrupt, but I did start to make a list based on Laura Tagg's list.
Okay.
Of everybody who has paid and everybody who hasn't paid.
Right, I know yours is more detailed, you know, I'm just kind of giving.
I used her list, so.
Okay.
But we can get that, I have it on.
Okay, um, the Long Island Antique Power, they, they've been doing it at, at, next to Hallackville from two thousand fourteen to eighteen, that's five years. The James Ford Fire Carnival's been doing it for eight years, so these just give you the events each month that happen, but I have actually how long they've been doing that, you know, actually, I mean, the Polish Civic Association, I started here in nineteen ninety-one, and that was one of the first resolutions for chapter two ninety at the time that I did. So they've been forever, that's like one that we know, Country Fair is the same one, you know, it's the same. Another one's East End Rowing, they've been doing it for thirteen years.
The Snowflake Regatta.
Yeah, mm-hmm, um, Dark Side Productions.
Right, right.
In Wading River, they've been doing it for twelve years, so we have a lot that have been doing it continuously, every single year, so that.
But they pay, right?
Yes, only not-for-profits have not paid.
The Railroad Museum.
Railroad Museum, um, they don't pay, they're not for, you know, we get that nice book from them, he's very, very thorough.
Yeah, we just need to, I think, know who's been doing it for ten years or more that is not paying, and then for five years and more, who is not paying.
Okay, ten years or more is gonna, that not pays, I can tell you what it is, Long Island Railroad Museum.
That's the only one?
Polish Civic Association, uh, the Riverhead Country Fair.
Laura, do you have Hallackville on there?
Hallackville, yeah, they have many events, um, they've been doing it for twelve years, and they, again, they're not-for-profit, so the Hallackville will be another one, um, Garden of Eve.
The Garden of Eve is the ones that pay, actually.
There's very few that pay.
Exactly.
Very, very few that pay, um, Costco sells Christmas trees, um, they've been doing it for four years up in front of Costco, but they pay.
Systic Fibrosis, six years, but they don't pay, they've been from two thousand thirteen to eighteen.
I think if, I also think there should be, if they have a, they have a chapter, and the benefit is to the community versus, even if you're a not-for-profit but you're outside of, of, you don't have a chapter. I think if, I also think there should be, if they have a, they have a chapter, and the benefit is to the community versus even if you're a not-for-profit, but you're outside of, of, you don't have a chapter in the town of Riverhead, I think you should still be paying a fee, you know?
I think everybody should pay a fee, I think they need to have a reduced fee for non, nonprofits, and a standard fee for.
Well, yeah. For nonprofits, yeah. Well, this is what you were saying, the not-for-profit organization, local charity's only one fifty.
Right, this is what was proposed, that we, but we kinda like halted.
So, so that, the, the, let's start with the first question, should everybody who has something pay a fee going forward? Whether you've had something, regardless if you've been doing it forever or not, it's still the town's time, it's still the town employees.
Yes, it still costs money to process.
I, I. Yeah, and so, and, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars, so, it's a reasonable price, and that's a not-for-profit, local charity only.
When you go to five hundred, they start to complain that it's not beneficial for them to hold.
Have the event.
Right, yeah.
I abstain. I have to abstain. I've been a member of Townscape for thirty years.
Rather than I, I had the printout here, I have to find it, I mean, the town of Southampton, they charge five hundred, eight hundred, I mean, they charge a lot more than, here we go, uh, this is who, this is Southampton. For parades and one-day events with less than two hundred and fifty people, it's fifty dollars per event day and twenty-five dollars per setup day, and then if there's events more than that, then it's one fifty per day, more than the two fifty to, to five hundred, so the amount of people, then.
Well, the amount of people dictates the amount of work, because whether you have a short form or long form, so if you do, it should be based on, you know, the number of attendees also, um, you know, it should be a sliding scale both, both ways.
Right.
Or you just have a basic fee for a short form and a basic fee for a long form.
Well, you could, now, right, but you could have, but you could have a thousand people or five thousand people, so, so I think if you have five thousand people, the fee should be more than a thousand people, that's what I'm, you know, there's a minimum, but, but the more you have, the.
For five thousand. So, like, the Riverhead Central School District for the five K run, and Paconic Bay Medical Center for the East End Walk, like, all those, you're saying, charge them.
The fee of a hundred and fifty dollars for the application.
Yeah, yes, 'cause it still costs the town money to process and do this, right.
Still costs the taxpayers' money to do it, you know?
And I got an email, I'm sure we all did, from Sal, um, Master Polo, which I agree with, uh, he suggested that we send a letter out to the agencies that haven't paid in the past to let them know that two thousand nineteen, it's going to be, so they can budget for whatever it's going to be, I think they should be notified, and instead of having them just come in and all of a sudden they slap at a fee they didn't, they weren't aware of.
This also doesn't include parade permits that, that I issue, so.
No. Parade permits, there's no fee with, or there's a fee, no fee?
No fee. No fee.
Well, there should be a fee.
Memorial Day Parade, and.
Yeah, the what?
Memorial Day Parade, I mean, that's a big event, for me, a lot of manpower involved, so.
Right.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I mean, the.
I think there's more, more manpower involved with the James Ford Parade.
A James Ford Parade, right.
You know, well, that's why I'm saying, you know, there's already tax-funded, taxpayer-funded organizations, such as the Riverhead School District, and the fire departments, and things of that nature, that you're putting a fee on the, you know, services, that people are already paying, tax dollars are already getting paid for, so you're just raising taxpayers' dollars by charging these.
Up six to one half dozen the other, we gotta pay as a town to process the applications, so it's only fair that the, the town be reimbursed.
I know, I just.
I, I get what you're saying, I, and I kinda agree with what you're saying, but I think in fairness, everybody's gonna have to pay, and I, I think obviously a, a not-for-profit is not gonna pay what a private setup is gonna pay, and that's how it should be.
Alright, so you have special application short form, you have the application filing fee is three, three fifty, everybody.
Bid map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, special event long form application would be six fifty, special, special event long form application over five thousand, twenty-seven hundred.
Ooh.
And the, uh, not-for-profit local charity's only one fifty, if they're not a local charity, meaning they don't have a, an office here, then, then they go file standard fees.
An office. Yes.
Okay. And, and this is just. Are there any cha- are there any?
Who has an office here?
Well, well, there are.
Not so much have an office here, but the benefit that local community.
Their mailing addresses here.
Like Church of the Harvest, and, um.
But they're, they're, they should have a mailing address here, right, where they receive their mail, or pay some, some sort of.
Or benefits from, the proceeds from their operation should benefit somebody.
Benefit.
So I pick up a P O box.
Well, the thing.
That qualifies you, or I.
Well, no, you have to show some other thing besides just the, the P O box that, you know, you can't have just bought the one P O box and say that I'm here, you have to have some sort of roots in the community here, um, uh, we, we have to figure out what that means, whether it's an office, whether it's, um.
Like Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, because they have packs here in the town, that would be considered.
Right, correct, correct.
But say the.
Cystic Fibrosis.
Cancer.
Yes.
Diabetes.
Heart Association, none of them.
Right.
They're all have corporate everywhere.
Right, so, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't be, because they're not, and then the other thing is, in our, in our forms, you know, what is the requirement for these not-for-profits to show where the money went to? Because I know that is in our requirements, that they're supposed to come back and show us how, what money they received from the event, but.
Right. It's in the code, but we, we don't ask for that.
But I think that we should start saying that you cannot reschedule for the following year, if you haven't complied with that, the previous event.
Okay.
Because we haven't been getting that from them.
I can't believe that all these years, the Country Fair only brings in nine hundred people at any one time, yeah.
I, aren't not-for-profits, don't they have to put their financials online?
Four hundred and ninety.
I'm not paying twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Not for each event necessarily, because they can run three events, and then they just do the nine ninety, and it's just listed as one raising.
There was only one, and I think it was canceled, it was going with, um, Vince, the, the radio guy, we were gonna have was a field day, well, no.
Jazz Festival.
It was some kind of music festival, the Blues Festival, and we said to him, okay, if you're not-for-profit, then we want a detailed, you know, uh, uh, spreadsheet of what, what your cost of, and what was made, and that was actually in his resolution that I prepared, but that never.
Killed the Blues Festival.
Yeah, yeah, that, I think that really is what killed it, yeah.
And unfortunately, that was more personality conflicts than anything else, in my opinion.
That's the one resolution that I remember, we did include that, as far as the profit cost.
But it's supposed to be in every single one, because that is in our code.
The not-for-profit, yeah.
Yeah, so we should, um, okay, and then, so, you know, I mean, if you look at the events that we're having, let's just take July or August.
But what do I really care, what a not-for-profit made in an event, or what it cost them, I mean, I really don't care, as long as they're paying.
Cause you wanna, you wanna know it's going to charitable, that it's not going to all their administration fees, like, they, if they're, we're giving them as a not-for-profit status, and if they take all of the event that they have here, and all of their fees go to administration, not, you know, it's just to make everybody clear what they're doing.
Yeah, they're not all the same, I would agree with that, right.
They're not all the same.
But who's gonna re.
So if you do March Dimes, and you kind of know that the money's being on Salvation Arms or like that, it's going up.
But who's gonna review all that information, is accounting gonna review all that information, or is Laura gonna review that information to see?
No, it's, unless it changes, it's gonna be me.
So, then, maybe the fee that we're charging is not enough, because.
I have one question.
If you're gonna be asking Laura to look at, you know, not-for-profit financial reports as to how much money they're making, how much is getting spent, and what the bottom line is per event, then.
Mhm.
And then you need some lead time, you can't be approving these things.
I have, my, my question's very simple, I mean, cause.
For what?
For them to apply, so they'll have to apply six months out to get all this, you know, in order as far as.
No, none of, none, it's a post, it's, 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 it's after the app, in our, in our code right now, where, where is it, where it says it, but it says at the end of the, at the end of the event, the, the not-for-profit needs to provide us what was done with the profits from the event, so you break in, bring in five thousand dollars, where was that, where did that five thousand dollars go? Was it, was it, you know, how, was it given to, whatever, the administration fee for whatever, and, and whatever their, their other fee is.
Don't you wanna know that upfront, though?
You can't, because you don't know what they're gonna take in for the event.
Yeah, at the.
I, I think we should strike that from the code, I really don't care about where not-for-profits spend their money.
Just see how it's listed.
It's, it's right here, um, if I just, I just found it here, um.
I don't wanna micromanage not-for-profits to say, oh, you spent too much money on administration and not enough into charity.
It, it's not.
Including setup, I'm gonna just get to that part.
It's if somebody says they're, they're having an event, they're a not-for-profit, they're having an event, they're gonna give, you know, all of the proceeds to, you know, the Veterans Fund, they need to show that they gave it to the Veterans Fund.
I don't really care who they give it to.
Well, it says here, at the, at the bottom.
They're a not-for-profit, that they have to get satisfied through the state that they are a legitimate not-for-profit, I mean, that would be like saying, anybody that gets grant funding in town that's a not-for-profit, that they should show us how they're spending their money, so that, no.
They do, they do, if they get grant money for us, there's a lot of reporting.
We don't give grant money, but I'm saying that if there's a project in town, that they, no, I mean, I, I think that that would just be exhausted to try and go through.
It's all reported.
Laura, can we just. Yeah, and, on, on section two fifty-five dash nine, permit required application, uh, D two, it says the name, address, the record owner, it keeps going on, the dates, the hours, but at the end where it, it, it addresses a charity, it says, um, the purpose of the event, describing in detail the nature of the activities to be carried on, and the emission fee to be charged, if any, and the name of groups, organizations, charities, or individuals who shall benefit from the proceeds of the event.
Okay, that's just a name, that, yeah, we don't need to know how much, or we need to get into their finances.
Right, so, right, yeah, right.
Well, that could be on the application.
But it does, at some point says that's verified, that that was sent, somewhere in there, it says that, I'm pretty sure it says, unless I can read it and connect it somewhere.
You making stuff up, Laura?
I might be, who knows, but I thought there was something in there that said that.
Emission fee, plans and drawings, security company, tent permit, lawn forms, animals, name of charities to receive benefits, we just read, drawings and plans, sanitary, water supply, parking area, garag- uh, garbage, sale, food, a beer, alcohol, music, lighting, security company, fire lanes, water supplies, Suffolk County Health Department, uh, applications or, or should say permits, communications, tent permits, handicaps, sign permit, restoration, uh, town authorization, certificate of insurance, police assistance, uh, letter of credit to clean up, resolution to be displayed on the property, horse stables, I E fireworks, there's nothing else that describes an offer.
So, so with this, with this.
Okay, and that's fine, I thought there wa- I thought there was something that had to verify that they actually gave them the money at the end of the event.
But with like the C D B G money that we give out, where we give five thousand dollars to Bret and Moore, and ten thousand dollars to the Butterfly Project, I mean, are we getting reports from them as to how much of that money is going towards administration versus towards rent, or towards?
It's onto the cha- that it, we, the charity they say they're gonna give it to, they give it to, that they don't retain it, that's, right, that's what I'm saying.
It's always been the honor system, because the Moose Car Club, that they, they always hold their car shows.
I wonder why.
Charlie Calley, I mean, he gives to the veterans, you know, we don't ask.
Right.
Their board decides who they're gonna give to.
Right.
Right, but in their application, they say who they're gonna give to.
Right, and if they don't, if they're asking for not-for-profit, I ask them.
Okay.
As long as they meet the not-for-profit status when they're applying for us, that's sufficient for me.
So, so what is our not-for-profit status, do they have to be a registered five oh C three B?
Yes, they have to be, uh, five oh one.
Five oh one C three, whatever, yeah.
Um, five oh one C, I think it is.
It's five oh one C three or five oh one C three B.
Okay, we usually get something either from the I R S, the internal, or the New York State, uh, taxation and finance, usually it's an I R S, the federal government, I get that, and if I don't have that.
You have a ten number or something? Right.
Okay. Those are the only two we consider not-for-profit, or, or do we consider the?
No, that's the only ones I consider not-for-profit.
Right.
My, my question, 'cause I didn't forget it, although.
Did you write it down?
No, 'cause I.
Peachy, Tim, peachy.
I see, I see the, no, it's a sound, I, I see, everyone knows, I'm married to the Country Fair, I've been it since I was eighteen years old, which is a couple of years ago.
It's an awesome program.
Now, there's some years we bring in five thousand people, and then if you listen to reports, twenty thousand people, or some years, like a couple of years ago, when it rained, we brought in three people, so
Right.
what I see is twenty-seven hundred dollar fee for the application, so, I, I have a concern about that.
Well, it was twenty-five, we only up to two hundred.
Was twenty-five before, you never paid, we've got a big bill coming to you.
It was twenty-five hundred.
I, I can tell you, it's, it's cost prohibitive, because you know, I'm like, I, I know the.
But your, your Townscape is a not-for-profit.
Insurance is a not-for-profit, that's the not-for-profit organizations, over five thousand.
Right, so it's one fifty. Right, so it's one fifty, but it's one fifty.
No matter what the attendance.
This is, this is not for profit, this is for one.
Alright, I'll give you a hundred fifty, alright, disregard, I have no questions.
Thank you.
And like, it's twenty-seven fifty, but it was twenty-five, we only went up to two hundred.
It almost killed me, I was like, oh my gosh.
And these have been in place.
We only make ten grand.
Over twenty years, the, these fees have never been changed since I've been here.
Last year, we lost ten grand.
For a whole time, so, so, so if we go to then the number of events, like two thousand eighteen for August, on one day, right, if this, one hasn't been canceled, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, six events, right, in September, one, two, three, four, five, we have two events on one day, on a Sunday in the middle of September.
Just for this year, you're looking at?
Yeah, and then we, but every single weekend, we have an event.
Usually for the summer, from, from.
Sure.
But thi- but this is what I'm saying, I mean, these are our big traffic times, you know, and, and like the, you know, the number of people that the events, I mean, should, I think there should be a limit on the events in, or no events in September, at least, August, September, and October.
So how do we determine which ones there are, I mean, you have the ones that are recurring, that have been doing it for maybe eight to ten years, and then you have brand-new ones that won, who gets first dibs, what if the ones that do?
I think, I think the established ones, I think the established ones, we should, we should put the established ones that we have during that time period, and figure out the number of people associated with them, because an event with a hundred people is much different than an event with a thousand people.
But these are all recurring, in looking at the names of these, these are all like Martha Clara East End Wine Tasting, and referring to August, Sound Avenue, and then you have P C Richard and Son Tent Sale, which is in the parking lot, and that's on Old Country Road. Then you have National Home Finders in Waiting River.
That's an outdoor movie in the new shops.
It's a brand new.
Yeah, an outdoor movie at night, at nine o'clock, and then you have Holystown Street Fair, two days, and.
Cancel that.
Right, but we have, but we have a lot more new events coming in, like, I don't see any of the Titan runs or any of that stuff on.
Titan we've had before, Terrain Run, race.
Terrain, Terrain and Titan, they're coming in September, and we're, they're not on here.
Mhm. Well, I didn't do those yet.
Right, so.
The ones that just were done from August seventh, I didn't have a chance to do it.
Okay, so, but, so the, but we have for September, we have about three more events on here at least, right?
Yes, at least, yeah.
And each one of them have how many people coming to them?
Um, I'm gonna say between five hundred, around five hundred, maybe, per day.
So we have probably another fifteen hundred cars for these events, in one particular place, on Sound Avenue.
I think they're like two point something people per car.
I, I can tell you, a lot of these applications come in wishful thinking, too.
Do you know what I'm saying? It's, it's, and, and it's a cumulative event, because it's cumulative, not just with the event, but with the police, so you could have, you know, you may need one police for directing traffic, but it really is six police, or three, seven police, because it's a cumulative effect of three events on one road within a couple of miles of each other.
And I think that's very important, that you bring that up, and I think that when it comes to Sound Avenue, when it comes to events in August, September, October, and November, that it should be first come, first served, you know, that's the person that's getting the event.
So, but do we limit it to one event, per day?
Uh, I would say so on Sound Avenue, and.
By location?
By location, they can't be within, like, two miles of each other?
Well, Sound Avenue is just.
Problem on Sound Avenue, is the pumpkin patch up there, so I mean, that's not an event, that's just a business.
Right. Yeah, and you.
I, I, but, but that's what I'm saying, so then you add on top of it, right, so you add on top of that event, you know, I mean, i- it may be that we need to talk to some of the people that have reoccurring events, that maybe they need to stagger them out.
Right, Hallackville.
I see where you're going, but I, I, I can't help but think that a lot of these events on Sound Avenue, and, believe me, when people fill out these applications, it's all wishful thinking, you know, we're the only event in town, we're gonna get a thousand people, and it just doesn't come to fruition, and I think a lot of times, these events on Sound Avenue, especially in September and early October, are banking on those pumpkin people driving by, they, well, let me see what's going on over here, so, I, I, I don't know, I don't know where there's.
They're pre-registered, they're pre-registered, most of these events, right?
Well, the races, the races are.
And that tends to be what's, what, the, the ones that are having, the, that are filling out the applications for it, other than something we've had for many years, but the new events tend to be pre-registered events.
Yeah, I don't know.
The newer ones tend to be pre-registered, not all of them, but, you know, and a lot of them are recurring, you know, I, a lot of them, I, they're in my directory, I've been doing them for five, six, ten years.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna have a lemonade stand, I want it, I want it, the, the last week of September, on, on, uh, Northville and Sound.
Right after a five K run race.
Yeah, right, that's right, yeah.
It ends at the lemonade stand.
We get a lot of phone calls for, uh, people who are doing events for the five Ks and the ten Ks, way ahead of time, because they wanna advertise, and they wanna lock in those dates.
Right.
So even now, like, this time of year, we'll start to get phone calls for next year, a full year in advance, they wanna lock in those dates, so that's really way ahead of time.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they don't wanna do outdoor runs, like, in iffy weather, March, April.
Right, right.
Or Octo- November, it's too cold.
So may.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to limit the events by the number of people, and we make our date out further, instead of forty days, maybe we do six months, so we can have a better handle on being able to plan these things, you know, so if, if, if we find that we're getting, you know, a, a lot of events in September, we can have a discussion, we've hit, we, we realize that we have an event every, you know, half a mile, we can no longer take, take those events, so we can't, we don't take the events individually, we take them in, uh, cumulative, for a particular time.
Okay, keep in mind, too, that we hire a lot of traffic control officers for the summer months, whereas we don't have them in the winter months, and part-time police officers in the summer months, when we need them, to be at these different locations and directing traffic, so.
Players remember that they're unlimited during the summer, right, during summer, and, or during season, they're unlimited, and. Players remember that they're unlimited during the summer, right, during summer, and, or during season, they're unlimited, and then off-season they're limited as far as how much they pay them.
Right.
Right, right, so that's why I'm saying that, you know, we hire extra staffing for the summer months in preparation for a lot of these events.
Maybe that comes through September fifteenth, November.
Right, September fifteenth through November fifteenth is a very busy season.
Yes.
That is the busiest season.
So maybe those are the times that we should look at, from September fifteenth through November.
You know, really, if you look at these spreadsheets, August is pretty busy.
August is very busy.
Yeah.
Yes, August has a lot.
But do you find August to be a bad traffic month, month with the event, I mean.
As compared to September, October, and, right, now there's a difference.
As, just. I mean, do you think that the events that we're having in August interfere with, with being people being able to travel as much? I mean, I just know personally myself, I, I, I mean, I'm not, it's, it's nowhere near the September, the September, October.
I agree with you.
For sure.
So, so maybe it should be the window of time that we don't have events is from, from September to really till Halloween, I think, would be a safe bet.
September fifteenth, I would say, when we lose our T C Os.
So maybe sh- those should be the days that we don't accept applications for.
What about all the recurring ones that happen?
The recurring ones, we can, we can, let's get the, what ones are recurring on those, do they always have them at the same day? We can also.
No, not always the same day.
Right, so we can, you know, not allow, we can talk to the people that are the recurring and say, listen, you know, this is a traffic issue, we need you in the, this year coming up, you can have this weekend, you can have this weekend, you can have this weekend. So you don't have three on one week and big events right next to each other.
We, that is codified, uh, uh, at section twenty-five dash eleven, review of application, approval or denial of permit. In determining whether to approve or deny an application, the town boards will consider the information provided in the application, and such other informations may be available, including but not limited to. Number three, the need for the town, the town to police such events, and whether the numbers of police officers assigned to properly police such event will prevent the town. From providing adequate police protection to the remainder of the town. Then if you go der- further down, number ten, if one or more events are scheduled for the same date that are within a half-mile radius of each other, the town board will determine if there are adequate resources for all of these events. If there are not sufficient resources to ensure public health and safety, the town board shall deny one or more permits if the impacts of the events cannot be mitigated. When deciding which event to deny, the town board shall consider the following, A, whether the event is recurring. B, whether this recurring event has been subject to a violation within the last past three years. C, the date the permit application was submitted to the town clerk.
Okay.
And D, if events occurred the prior calendar year, the town board should consider what their impact was on that area.
But I think this is, this is where forty days is not enough time, because somebody's out there already advertising their event, they're already promoting it, and it doesn't give the town enough time. To be able to, to make these decisions in a, in a, in a manner that's, you know, allows the person having the event to adjust what they need to do.
And that's the number one.
I mean, I think that that's the problem.
Like, complaints I get, or a, a matter of like, oh my god, you know, I'm advertising for this, if I can't have it, I spent all this money, and I have to refund all this money, and, and, you know, all these.
Well, that's a, that's a mistake you won't make again, that one.
Yeah, but I'm just speaking to that.
Yeah, but we, uh, but our, but our, our thing, I mean, if we, it, it puts a lot of pressure on, on, on the town, which it shouldn't.
I know, the only thing is that we as a town board, I mean, you see it as they come in, you see it as you're quoting, I mean, it, it doesn't really rise to our level until it comes to as a resolution, so. I mean, I, I don't know what, what, where the, uh.
And you make them apply, you make them apply six months in advance.
How do we know? I understand, the town board still has to be made aware of the fact that we might have to make a decision whether to deny it or not.
Well, I think Laura. Laura.
Right, but then it gives, it gives everybody the ability to, to determine, or if somebody, you've, you've made a decision, you had somebody come in, the six months in advance, and, and eight months in advance, you already know that you're going to give it to them, it's a reoccurring. So when somebody comes in six months and says, I want, well, do you say that date's already taken?
They can hand that on staff, though, it's not a town board decision.
No, I mean, if the date's taken.
But they could do that within forty-five days too.
I thought, I thought you just read the law, that's a board, I thought you just read the law.
They could do, they could do it within forty-five days, but if you're running a five K race, or you're running this, or you're running that, most of these people have put their advertisement out already, and, and so it leaves them in a, in a, in a sticky, a sticky place.
Did you just read the board, is that the same?
Well, that's their problem, as far as Arizona can start.
I, I, yeah, I understand that, but if we're gonna have to make a decision, you know, who's having what, you know, I think having that timeframe to do that in, and having the police have the timeframe to do that in. I think just gives us more of an opportunity to make the, just better decisions.
I think six months is a little extensive to come to the town and say, I wanna have this event, and.
I don't think so.
I think every one of these events on here that's reoccurring, I think you could probably ask them now, okay, here's a calendar, pick your date, all right, you know, country fair is already this date, so can you pick the following weekend?
The exception of me putting these applications in.
And then they can plan out, you know, and it plans out, it, it makes it, it better for the town, so not everybody's planning on the same date, or you come in and look at a calendar. In advance, and you know what's going on that day, that you're not gonna be able to do it that day, because it gives them some flexibility also.
Right, well, we had Connie Paliccia in here, a couple of weeks ago for work session, and she said, I need to know what you're gonna be charging me, and what dates I'm gonna get, before I advertise the event and start taking people's money. So, if you're advertising and taking people's money before you have an approval, then you're crazy, like, you gotta leave it up to the people to have some common sense.
Well, that's just stupid. That's stupid, it's like open bus rides, you didn't buy a bus yet, it's ridiculous.
They gotta have some common sense as to.
So then we, do we deny everything? If we put in, if we put in six months, do we deny everything under six, prior to six months?
Well, we, if, that's, that's.
I mean, that's, that's, that's the other, that's the other opportunity, so we don't even have to deal with the headache, it's six months, you don't have to make six months prior, that's it, you're out.
Well, I don't know whether we're gonna, I don't know if it'll be that heavy-handed.
I know.
But that's what I'm saying, you can't have, you, you gotta do one or the other.
I, I think that the.
Because we, we still accept people that come in under forty days, under a hundred and twenty days all the time.
But, but a lot of times, but a lot of times we do that when, only for recurring events, like if it's the Jamesport Fire Department, or if it's a fireworks show, or if it's a, um.
No.
But.
They should know better, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, the country fair came in late, I'll be honest with you, and it's 'cause.
'Cause people are working and they're volunteering their time.
Well, no, we thought.
But that's what we're trying to change, that's, that's exactly what we're trying to change, so we don't keep go- being in this situation.
Right. I'm not, I'm not into the town being so heavy-handed, that, all right, you know, here's, it's, I'm sorry, wait till next year, I, I think, um.
Then everyone's gonna have to pay that fifty-dollar additional, um, fee for not having a certificate of insurance.
Maybe, maybe double the fee, instead of making it fifty dollars if it comes in less than.
Well, I'm not saying they shouldn't be denied, I'm just saying that it should, should be a case by case thing.
Fifty dollars is not gonna, so fifty, these people are making thousands and thous- fifty dollars is nothing.
No, that's, I, I.
I'm saying double the permit fee.
I would say if you buy now with one fifty, six months ahead of time, if you're not, it's eleven fifty.
Yeah, I, I think that would be, that you double, you, you, you know, you can really exp- you know.
Right, make the, it's hard on them to say, okay, now.
Right, so if you wait, if you wait, it, right.
Right, they deny themselves.
If you put in a late application, it doesn't mean it's an automatic approval either.
Oh, is everyone in agreement on the six months?
A late application is driving.
I'm not in agreement on that.
Okay.
That's driving great.
I think, I think six months is, I, you know what, 'cause having dealt with not-for-profits, when they say, eee, we're running out of money, we gotta pay our, you know, this, or we gotta pay that, you know, let's have an event, and they'll say, let's have something at. You know, swish splash, and it may be a couple of months in advance, or three months in advance, and they're looking to have an event, I just, I think six months is too much to expect.
So how about six months if you're gonna have more than a thousand people in the day?
Okay.
And we're at one twenty for that already, though, right?
We are.
We're at one twenty for that, so I think, I think then the other one has to be more, if you're gonna have between, say, seven fifty and a thousand, I, it has to be more than forty days, it's just, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
To try and do seven fifty to a thousand and more than four, if, if you're.
But maybe do.
The short form, the, the one, one hundred and one to one thousand is the most that we get, so maybe do seven fifty.
But let's, let's.
So do three months for that, and six months for the larger ones.
But let's, the, the hundred and twenty days for that, and then, a hundred and eighty days for, for larger.
But let's. I. I think there's, I think there's gotta be, there's gotta be more of an approval from the, for the se- if you go up to five hundred, right, say if you go, go to five, to, to seven forty-nine, okay? Then you could do the forty days, but if, once you go to seven fifty to that thousand, thousand number, which is a lot, it's, it's almost, it's just as much work as almost a thou- over a thousand, correct? When you're at that number, you need more time for that.
Well, that's a hundred and twenty days, yes.
No, it's not, it's forty days.
It's twenty, it's four months.
It's forty.
Seven fifty-two, I, I think.
One thousand and one people is a hundred and twenty days, anything under that is the forty days, that's a month and a half.
I think. I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree with you, I think that anything over a thousand should be, you know, maybe the six months, to plan for it. 'Cause it, it's a thousand to infinity, you know, it's, I think that that is something that should be six months.
Well, that kind of.
If you're starting from, you know, smaller events, under, for a hundred people, then maybe the night, the forty days, forty-five days.
Yeah, I think that's a good point as far as understanding that there's different types of events.
Correct.
I mean, these big events run by, uh, not-for-profits, they have to be planning a year in advance.
Outside. Right, yes.
Absolutely.
So.
Another one, the tent sale at whatever, Costco or whatever, is not a big event.
It's not a big deal, and it's not a big impact on the town either, that's a good point.
Right, for sure.
So if you go, a tent sale is, is a piece of cake.
It's not a lot of work for me.
Right.
So if you go, say, from two hundred and fifty people, or two hundred and fifty-one to nine hundred and ninety-nine, then maybe that's a hundred and twenty days.
But, but I think.
And then, once you get to a thousand, then it's a hundred and eighty days, six months.
So, but I think, I think there's, there's this group in there in between and.
Where most of them that you said, that, that apply.
That, that seven fifty to a thousand people are, are almost as much work as over a thousand, but if you wanna give, and that tends to be a lo- what a lot of the events are.
Yep.
That forty-day window, I think those, they should be more than forty days, under that, I think you can do them in the forty, in the forty days, because they won't have as much impact on the town.
See, the resolutions, especially recurring, I pull up the previous year and I just beef it up. The prob- the, the, the thing that takes time is, number one, to get ahold of these people, sometimes they give email addresses or phone numbers, you leave messages and they don't call you back, I just did it today.
So that's what we could do right there.
I, I talked to her August first, I talked to her July, she just called me back today, August twenty-second, I said, you wanna have the event on September thirteenth, it's not gonna happen if you don't get me what I need, and what usually it is, is, is alcohol-related. The permits and the insurance, um, and then food vendors, to get the health department, that is where really the.
But do you think forty days is enough to do that in?
Not for alcohol and food vendors, is what she's saying.
No, no, not.
But, but, but we don't base it on that, we base it on the number of people, so you can have.
No, but maybe we should base it on that.
I, I, yeah, I, I think also, it's like a tent, P C Richard have a tent permit?
Okay, so then that's.
They almost send a sheet, a check-up sheet, and there's people that wanna have it in, this is what you need, and this is how much time you need to do it in.
Yeah.
Right. Right. Right.
Right, yeah, and, you know, I mean.
Right, so let's agree on the time period for it, I agree, that's, that's the easiest way to do it.
I don't think forty days is long enough.
It's not.
Not for alcohol and food vendors.
No, no, no.
So, okay, so we have six, we have six, six months for over a thousand people.
To get this, to this applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then we have, if alcohol and food, any, any size event with alcohol and food, what timeframe are we putting for that?
I would say a hundred and twenty days.
That would be three months, right?
Yep, that would work.
That's four months.
A hundred and twenty days.
Four, four months, four months.
Okay, and then events that are seven hundred and fifty people to a thousand people. A hundred and twenty days.
Mm-hmm, four months.
And under, from anything for, 'cause it starts at a hundred, right?
Mm-hmm.
So a hundred to seven forty-nine, we're doing sixty days, instead of the forty, that'll be two months.
That would be great.
All right, so, is this okay with everybody? Six months for every, anything, and it's no longer for waves, it's the total day event number. Okay, so if you have, you're gonna have a race, and you're gonna have waves of people, but if you're going to have, it's a thousand and one people, a thousand and one persons for the entire event for the day. You fall into the six-month category, you fall into that numbered category.
Mm-hmm.
So six months for over a thousand and one people, alcohol and food, any size event, um, a hundred and twenty days, but if it's over a thousand and one, and alcohol and food, then you're still back up to the six months. Seven fifty to a thousand, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty days, and one hundred to seven hundred and forty-nine, sixty days. Does that seem okay with everybody?
But what about the seven fifty to a thousand for the one twenty, or the one hundred and seventy-nine, if they have alcohol and food?
Right, everything for alcohol goes to, everything for alcohol and food, if you're seven fifty to a thousand, you're at one twenty.
There's no, there's no, no.
Okay.
Right, but if you're, if you're one hundred to seven hundred and forty-nine, you have alcohol and food, you're at one twenty.
Mm-hmm.
You're four months.
Now, some events have several vendors that you have to verify and get the health department certificates for, and then others may have one or two vendors, so.
I think there's some alcohol right now.
Mm-hmm. Right.
How long does that take you, to figure out how many of the vendors actually have their food permits?
Like if it's a Leroy's Heinz. Well, if you do something like the country fair they did last year, it's huge, but normally for like, um, the Long Island Antique Power.
We, we, we do.
Um, I just called her, because that was another one, she put twenty-five hundred attendees, but meanwhile, she has about fourteen events on one application. So I called up, I said, is this like?
Per event or per?
Per event or per, and she said, no, 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 she said, you know what, that's wrong, probably it's five hundred the most each day. I said, well, come in and amend your application, because otherwise I'm gonna have to bump you to a long form, it's still not-for-profit.
It's not even, it's not even, they have been in.
But why? But, but they should have to fill in an application for each one of the events.
No, not the way the code is.
But our code says that they can have a hundred and eighty days of, um, the same event, weekend after weekend.
But there's diff- eight weeks duration. But it's not the same event, it's all different events, you're saying.
Yes, different days, same location, but different days.
So. But are they the same event on each one of those days?
No.
So then it should be all, if it's not, it's not like a tent sale where you have the same event every day for the certain number of time, they have to put in an application for each one of their events, because they're different events.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's not like the ice club.
It's like Long Island sports, they can't put in a a hundred and eighty-day application, and just say, I'm having different events there, so this should be the same.
Right, but that's. Okay, but it says in, any form of entertainment, eight weeks duration or less, so you're saying if it's the exact same thing, that they're not changing, like, they're gonna have bull riding, but they're not gonna have tractors, so.
Are they advertising those different events?
Yeah.
Then they have to have each of them.
Well, not advertising different events, they actually, they named them, I don't know what they advertised them, but they did name them, different events I had in there.
About like a summer concert series, how would you ever allow?
A summer concert series can be one, it can be one of, one event, it's the same type of event, just a different band, right? So different music, but it's the same exact event.
Right.
But if, if you're doing this, you have a tent over here one day, you're doing a tractor pull another day, you're doing a different type of event, right?
I didn't do it yet, but I, I, I thought it was, I think it's assembly permit.
You better just keep quiet, because this is.
It's all on private property.
It's all being recorded.
So what you're saying then is for the Long Island Antique Power, they're having, they've already had many events, we have to ratify them
Right.
because the, the, the application was not processed, that was staffed all. But anyway, she still has four events that are coming up in September and October, they're all different, they're not just tractor pulls. Um, she can remain on the short form because she does have five hundred attendees, it's, it's, it's not twenty-five hundred. But now I have to tell her that she's gotta put in, leave other applications for that same...
And pay a hundred and fifty dollars per application.
Right, well, not, not gonna pay now because it's not-for-profit.
Well, we have...
Because this is, this is, this is moving forward, this, we're, we're gonna set a date that we change everything and start, and we'll notify everybody, so continue doing what you're doing
Okay. Okay. Right.
now till we change everything, but, but it should be, it should be different events, because when the chief has to go in, you know, maybe the tractor pull is gonna have two hundred people,
Going forward.
but their next event may have eight hundred people.
No, I totally agree, but we go by the...
You know, so they're, they're, they're different, they are, they're attracting different crowds to the event because they're hosting something different.
Right. Right.
You know, it'd be like, uh, you know, Home Depot can't do a plant sale and a rug sale, those are two different events, correct?
They're two different events, they're two different applications.
They're at the same, same exact location, same exact event, but the...
But they have many days, even like Costco, they're selling Christmas time, they're selling Christmas trees, but it's in front, it's the same thing, they're not changing
Right.
the actual event, right, and they do, they do like up to eight weeks is what it is.
But they have, but, but they have...
I think the, was Els Club doing it for a while with their normal races, they were listing all six of them or something?
Yeah, not, they would have three or four of them, but not like the entire summer, you know, they, they haven't had that.
No.
Now, it's all grown over now, I don't think they run them anymore.
Yeah, they haven't had those, I looked at my...
What are the eight weeks, that runs from like, say, July first through, you know, whatever eight weeks takes you, whereas it's...
Eight weeks in the whole twelve months.
Within the whole twelve months, they can have eight weeks, so scattered about, so say they wanted something in January, February, March, they were all the way...
Yeah. Right. That's fifty-six days.
That's all the way through August, that would be eight weeks.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Eight weeks is fifty-six days, if you're gonna have the same exact event and you wanna fill up the calendar for every single weekend, as long as it doesn't exceed the fifty-six days, they can do it.
Right. They can do it.
According to the code.
In a calendar year.
But if it's a different event, they need to apply for all of them.
We can do that, we were not doing that, yeah, I mean, it was still, it, it, I mean, it, one wasn't like, well, I can't even say that, I don't even have an example.
Each one individually.
Yes. I mean, they could have the same event, they could have the, the, the tractor, tractor pull three times out of those eight, eight weeks, and that would be the same event.
Right. Right.
So that would be on this date, this date, this date, and another day they may have like a, a, a country fair or a car show, that's a different event, even, but even if they had it three weekends,
Car show.
Right.
Right.
it's not a separate event for each time they do the car show of...
Well, Martha Flaherty used to do that with their, to circumvent the...
Do you know?
I know, you say, do you wanna break it by days, if it's not continuous days, then they would have to file separately?
Right. It needs to be... It needs to be eval- the, the events are eval- evaluated on who's coming to the event, what they're doing at the event, that makes you deter- what the event consists of.
What the event consists of.
Right.
So if, and that has how you determine what you're going to do, so a car show may attract this many people, but then if you're having, uh, music and, and everything else, it may be a different number, so you need to be able to know that it's not the same as the car show.
So let's go back to the concert series, so I have, you know, just, not to pick on you, but, maybe it's your shirt that's attracted...
I did an assembly party, so I mean...
Bee Gees.
But he could have the Boston Pops on the last day, you know what I mean, so it's...
Mm-hmm.
He's gonna have five thousand people show up.
But then, but then in his application, in his application, but in his application, he would have to go with, he would have to say what, yeah, yeah.
Or he's gonna have Jim Booton live and some people show up.
I'm gonna go find out.
Say that.
The most I've ever had, that happened with, it was, I think, two hundred and twenty so far, but, most is about a hundred people come to this, huh?
I think that...
I think we bring up some good points, I think that the drafting of the change to the code should be done, and then it should come back to us for work session,
I can do it in my backyard.
and then I think, uh, notification should go out to all the people that file chapter nineties on a regular basis to let them know that we're gonna be having a public hearing on it
Yeah, absolutely.
and that, because there are things, and like Jim just said, even though he would hope that five hundred to a thousand people would come, or a thousand people or more, you know, on...
It's, it's growing, though, it's getting bigger, I think a location helps.
But it doesn't always happen, and there are hurdles that you experience on your side of the equation that we're not familiar with. So I think that the people that do regularly file these type of applications should be notified of when we have the public hearing.
And in terms of quantity of programs being done on particular days, you really have to be the barometer of that
Mm-hmm.
and notify us as the board, and say, look, what do I do, I've got eight things coming in for this day.
You know who's very good at that, Craig Zidick, he'll call me and he says, we can't have that, I have this going on and that, and I only have two guys, but we, it's not gonna happen.
Cause you could have fifteen weddings going on at the same time, on the same street, and, and, and four fairs, and...
Right, but... I don't have the authority to, to deny that, it would have to come through the town board, as, as a state, yeah, yep.
But we need to know that, because somebody will walk around to get something ratified, because it's past the time limit, and we don't know what's scheduled for that day, we have no idea.
Right. Right, and you don't know, right.
Right, we don't, and that is...
Well, like, well, Karen now has access to all that, so Karen should know.
But the tent... But the tent permits come through you, right Diane?
Everybody can have access.
No, so, they used to come through you though, didn't they, and then they...
No, fire, almost fire marshal.
Cause maybe the tent permits need to come in to the clerk too, so that we know how overburdened our fire marshals are, and she's...
Laura Taggs sends us the list, so on there are the tent permits, so I don't know if she's...
Because there needs to...
Well, that's what it is, a master, a master list of what's going on on that day, you know, maybe we can, um, maybe we could ask VAS to kinda do, right, but it's gotta be in a wor- it's, maybe it should be part of the workflow station,
It is. She has everything out on the on there.
I have it on y'all. Okay.
um, so that, so that we have, uh, we know what events are going on around the town dur- during a particular day, um...
Yeah, like the fire marshal, I mean, the parade permits, the chief gets, the fire marshal gets the tent permits, you're getting the chapter two fifty-five application, so